It's patent, hearing examiners recommending it.
Well, we attend the hearing examiners.
No.
Then you won't be able to speak to the Board of County Commissioners unless you're at the hearing examiner's meeting.
That's my understanding of protocol or to go check it, but that's my.
Guarantee.
Because my understanding is that they're proposing to amend their PUD or planning document that prohibits blasting after Lee County changed their general ordinance dealing with blasting because of a change in state law. That's always in original materials. And if it is a zoning matter, if it did not appear before the hearing examiner, there are rules where you cannot appear before the county commission.
May I?
Yes.
Okay.
So Tony is correct. Legislature passed a new law that doesn't, removes local agencies from overseeing and regulating blasting. Now Fire Marshal's in charge of that. And the only reason why the recommendation came to, from the hearing examiner to allow blasting is because they have no jurisdiction to enforce or regulate. So that's number one. My concern for the district is because part of the district's utilities, the building, are in the zone. And all I think about is how well we did the maintenance for the last thirty years and what are the impacts that will have on that. Because the studies that they did is in well-maintained equipment. It's in buildings and homes that have not stucco issues as they have in Cypress Gate and they have in Bristol Park. So, and that's what I spoke at the meeting. I said, those are the results and those are the measurements that you're using in a regular home. And thankfully Magnolia Lakes, you know, does not have that issue, but Cypress does. So it may not take that much vibration to start getting pieces of stucco flying out. What concerned me the most at that meeting, it was they were willing to offer a pre-inspection to everybody that was within the zone. They would be notified, certified mail, regular mail, but it did not detail the steps they would take. And the hearing examiner, assistant or staff, I'll say that, he did say that pretty much he couldn't enforce it. So Lenar would just tell us whatever we wanted to hear, but it would not be the county's job to enforce the promise or enforce it that was gonna get done. I was concerned that district was not notified as far as I'm concerned. I was the one that brought it up to the district, this issue. I personally was also not notified and none of the residents in Magnolia Lakes. And Lenar is saying that they did send a communication. I find very interesting that none of my residents received a communication. District didn't receive the communication. I wasn't aware that the school, which is also in the zone, received notification. So I don't have a good faith in Lenar on this. Not to mention, we had a fire two weeks ago on Lenar's property, which had damaged at least six homes in Magnolia Lakes. We're talking about screens, solid panels, nothing that expensive. Homeowners are trying to get ahold of Lenar to file claims for one to two thousand dollars. They're not getting called back. So if the district thinks it's gonna be an easy process to try to get something fixed because of the blasting, take the fire in consideration. And that's mine, we're talking about six homes.
And I do understand what you're saying and I agree with you on the concerns, but if, if we don't have standing to speak to the Board of County Commissioners if we weren't at the hearing examiner's meeting.
Correct, but I'm willing to take a letter from Tony and read that letter on behalf of the CDD and I can do that.
I'm not sure if you could do that. I mean, I guess the question, because if the board authorized me to explore whether we could do that and then have Flobb read it, but it's probably not likely. It's probably gonna be determined by the county attorney to not be acceptable. That's number one. Number two, I went online and looked at the affidavit of the mailing of the notices that went out and also asked Steve Hartzell, who's the attorney for Lenar and this. He provided me a copy of it and the district was on the list of the party that received notice.
So, so we.
It went to and from our corporate Coral Springs. Because that's the listed registered agent or the real estate. The county goes by the records of the property appraiser's office. And there are a whole bunch of people that were notified within the zone. There's a zone that's indicated. I don't know if you've seen the list. Okay. And so that, that's the affidavit mailing. It doesn't say they have to prove that the person received it. A lot of people may have moved, again, they go by the most recent list from the property appraiser's record. So if there's been a transaction that didn't get picked up in time from the list from the property appraiser or maybe as of a certain date, that's the flaw in that notification system. Sorry, Steve, is it?
No, I'd just like to see a copy of that too.
I'll go send it to you.
We didn't get anything. If we had gotten something, it would have come back to Chris or myself or someone.
Yeah, I can send you what I received from Steve Hartzell, what I also saw.
Flobby, I can't envision exactly where this blast is gonna take place. Could you help me?
Sure. Behind the entire community of Magnolia, behind the entire community of Cypress Gate, behind the entire community of Bristol Park.
Feel right over there. Feel straight.
Right behind us.
Tree behind us, back, back in the dog park.
All of it here.
Oh.
All of it. Like, so this community, this community, this community, this community, this, this school. And I think the blast zone kinda ends by FPL being made.
We can use tree.
Yeah.
Yeah, what I suggest, man, is if even checks and finds that the notice was in fact not received, I think there might at least be an opportunity to technically, you know, send the letter to the county attorney's office saying, hey, this affidavit mailing said that, however, in reality, they didn't get it. I mean, that might, and you'd like to have the opportunity. They may still say no, but it isn't shown. If there are some technical reasons why we can try to say, again, the problem might be if the state has preempted this field and Lee County has no authority to regulate it, it might be a total, it wouldn't.
Yeah.
So I can, I can check that also, but that's, if that's, and that's what I understand from.
Let me know.
When I, when I read the executive summary, that's what I understood it happened, that the state preempted this field. Chris, is that your understanding also? Yeah. And Mike?
What's next, Chris?
Well, I'm probably, I have Austin Manoli here and he's our graduate student intern. He's gonna do a brief presentation on our GIS project. But in regards of time, considering we have one more action item, so probably shift this unless you wanna take five minutes and hear it.
Let's go ahead and hear it.
Okay. Austin, you might get up, introduce yourself and I told him you had five minutes, now you have four.
This, okay. So my name's Austin Manoli, I'm a graduate student and I'm the intern that you guys hired to help convert your paper maps over to GIS format. So the main objective behind this project is to get rid of all of the old, like, physical paper maps. Because they're carrying with age. And also, they're difficult to handle. It takes people like an hour to go through and find what they're looking for. So basically, the objective is just to get rid of that and create a system that's far easier to use and is also more accurate. So first stage is cataloging and scanning and indexing maps. All the cataloging was done by hand and then they're scanned and the scanned files are integrated into an Excel spreadsheet for calculating costs and also the size of the files. And also into an access database, which was the first system that I developed for, basically trying to index and make these easier to access while we're converting it into a GIS. So the next stage, which our GIS consultants actually told us we could do is you can incorporate these maps into what's called a KNZ file, which is readable through Google Earth. So it's readable through free software. You basically put that place marks down on the map and then you can attach Google Drive links to it, which can enable a technician out in the field to access this KNZ file and then just, you know, click on it and pull up all the plans associated with the location they're at. And the final stage is to incorporate it all into a geographic information system. The example that you're gonna see is done in a software called, which was produced by, as we, they're basically the big ones with GIS software. So our consultant, he basically went through and took the paper plans for Timberwood Preserve and converted all the data in those paper plans into the features that you see on that map. So the base map that you built off of is from the Lee County Property Appraiser website. The layers, it's just sewer lines, water lines, valves, meters, all that sort of stuff from the paper plan set, just trace over it by hand. And then that's what it looks like in Google Earth with like the complete aerial base map. As far as what this project has cost to date for scanning, it's been around thirty-seven hundred dollars. I guess what that adds up to. Fort Myers Digital, they bill flat rate, three dollars per sheet. Passerell and Associates, we had some scanning done through them. They bill on an hourly basis and that came out to around three forty-five. And our GIS consultants bill thirty-two fifty so far. Around twenty-two hundred, that was for base map development for the entire district. And the actual creation of the features for Timberwood Preserve costs a thousand dollars, I think it was around that. As far as the budget available is twenty-five thousand. And projected expenses, projecting that scanning is gonna come out to be around seventy-five hundred and eight thousand dollars because you know, about halfway done. And the cost for GIS services is still being resolved. Although we were quoted preliminary figure of one dollar and forty-five cents per linear foot, I think it was. And, but that may change as the scope of work evolves. There any questions?
Is this the kind of mapping system that would be, we can update it as we get, continually get more information or things in the district change?
Yes.
Can continually be updated?
Yeah. That's one of the big advantages of these sorts of digital formats is that they're much.
Because we did it once before and we couldn't, so. Would he be able to print a map from this?
Uh, yeah, you could. You can basically outline a section, generate a layout and just print it out. And you can have a complete map of a specific area on a larger map.
Just say, say better that Pelican's using.
No, we're using, can I disclose that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Yeah, we're using MKC Services LLC. They're a smaller firm than Passerell was, but they're just more dedicated specifically to this sort of work. They don't do any larger environmental consulting.
And Chris, can we, I mean, basically what Pelican has done is we can interface with.
Sure, it's the same, same base map there, using the property appraisers' base map. And one of the things we're going with the KNZ file, that way instead of searching through an index, looking for maps when you're out in the field, when the staff has that laptop and utility, they can go right to it, touch the subdivision and the plans.
Yeah, definitely.
And I think we're storing all this on Google Drive.
Yeah. And I'll just add, this is what you.
As long as we are getting a product that's equal to or better than Pelican's.
Hey, good luck. We're all in this together.
I said equal to. I said equal to.
Or better.
The Pelican product is more oriented to homeowners accessing the information. This is really specific to utilities. We have an item in the budget to do a system somewhere that Passerell, and they gave us a scope for Pelican. We're just waiting till we get that ADA access to website straightened out before we move forward with that. This is particular to the enterprise fund and to utility facilities.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you. On a previous screen that you had, I noticed a, it looked like a website address. It was a, not a dot com, a dot something else, which I believe.
Is it this one?
Yeah, KNZ, what you said, a dot.
That's just a file type readable through Google Earth. It's basically just allows you to place a location-specific mark and then you can go through.
Oh, it's not a website.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for the update.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Anything else?
No, that's all, that's all for today.
District Attorney.
Just briefly, I'm in Greenert Phase Two, gonna have to ask for a lead from them and that should be quick so you can resolve everything. With the, so that's, that's just a matter of wrapping that up. On the ADA contract, Leslie, I need to get with her my handwritten notes. The, apparently, that provided Michael Craft, the vendor can't read my handwritten notes. So I just need to resolve all that. Hopefully we'll have that by the next board meeting to wrap that up. The next board meeting also, we have the draft AGO question on Storybrooke Road, so that'll be a part of.
I'm sorry.
We'll have a draft question, request to the Attorney General's opinion with regards to Storybrooke Road. That'll be in the next agenda and then just working with the manager on other items as appropriate.
Any questions for our attorney? Thank you. Yeah, we finally get to the holiday now. Three B.
This is, this is my item and it's very similar and I have a copy of the draft flyer if anyone would like one. Using the same event organizer, the format will be basically the same. We have a few additional entertainers that we've added to that. And we'll also have, bring a toy or Walmart gift card to donate for kids, for foster children. And very similar to the event, we have nineteen thousand dollars budgeted. We'll probably spend about twenty-six thousand, but that money over budget will come from contributions from local vendors, banks and other people that have participated previously. So we should be able to do that event on budget and actually a little better than last year.
Governor Chair.
Yes.
Can we make sure that any communication gets out to Pelican? I think last year we kinda missed Pelican in the, in some of the updates and, just as a point of reminder.
We, we put those out in the utility bills and we, in addition to the utility bills, they will be going out to all the HOAs and management companies and they will also go over to Pelican and Scott and the folks over there to make sure that they're informed of the event.
It's a great event. I mean, last year was the best we've ever had, it was awesome. And we, I think you estimated fifteen, fifteen hundred, I think it was more than that.
I think so too. We were looking at the, you know, proposal says twelve hundred plus, but it was full.
Yeah, I think it was more than that, quite a bit.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Uh, someone.
Okay, we made a motion to approve the paid payment to all post options events. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's see, utility lift station scats. You're a patient.
Director and Kenny Hall, Utility Manager. This expenditure is for one hundred and six thousand dollars. This will complete our district lift station system. This will add all twenty-seven or account into the system. All twenty-seven stations will be under monitoring. Any emergencies, problems, power outages for any of the lift stations will go directly to our on-call and myself. And this also, we are going to split this system up. One of the things we found was that in the event that we lose the SCADA system as a whole, we lose the irrigation system and we lose the lift station system together. Even though there are two, two operating systems, what we plan on doing is separating them. So there will be two completely distinctive systems with two connections. And that will finish up everything. The numbering system will be completed. This, this action is, the BCI is our contractor. They're asking for one hundred and six thousand dollars to complete this project.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in the second. Any questions for?
Question?
Mr. Guy?
Can you tell me what SCADA is?
I can't.
Supervisor.
Supervisor.
I think you got this one tonight.
Supervisor can't ask.
Disparate.
It's a Norwegian furniture manufacturer.
Supervisory command and data acquisition.
Take it.
Supervisory command and data acquisition.
Okay, nice. I knew I was, I knew I was gonna take it, but I didn't.
She just stopped at the D, that's all.
My, I just went, this one is for, this, this, this action is for an expenditure of seventeen thousand three hundred and.
Let us call the vote. If you, if you want your scan.
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You got it. Okay, now you can make a vote.
This expenditure will be for seventeen thousand three hundred and forty dollars. It's the complete rehabilitation of six manholes in the Daniels Preserve community. We budgeted fifteen thousand dollars for manhole, just general manhole maintenance. What we found on our normal utility sweep, we found six in Daniels Preserve that are in very, very bad condition.
Kenny, is this H, H two S?
Yes, sir. What appears to be, whether on the original design or when they originally did it, the line didn't take or it, it went through, but it completely destroyed six manholes. And we found, we caught this on, just on general maintenance during, during a community sweep, we found these. I got a call and a complete panic that I had to come right away and look at these manholes. And when I went and looked at them, it was, it was bad.
So the concrete's deteriorated?
Yes, sir. It is, it is more than fifty percent.
So you're, we're going to seal it the next time?
We are going, BJ Linings is going to go in and completely stucco them, redo them, redo the shelving and then re-line them and then paint them. We will be doing, so we budgeted fifteen thousand. We're gonna slide over an additional two thousand three hundred and forty dollars and do six in a row in Daniels Preserve. We will have district field staff on hand. We're gonna do the MOT, letting the residents know. I am planning on going to the Daniels Preserve HOA meeting next week to let them know. We're gonna be doing this for about five days, is the contractor's estimating, to do all of them in a row.
I've got a motion to approve, but I wanna make sure, there's a hell of a lot more than six manholes in Daniels Park.
Yes, sir.
We need to be checking them all because I have a feeling.
We went through every, we went, we went through every single one of them. We went through every single one of them as, as the sweep. We found twelve, six were in, twelve, twelve we considered bad, where that, what we could get over the next two to three years. But we found six that were in dire need, that were very, very bad.
Mr. Guy?
And I didn't think about it earlier when we were talking about the blasting. But, I mean, you know, areas where you might have, you know, aged concrete, aged utilities, you know, some of the buried concrete structures. I didn't think about it earlier when Flobby was talking about it, but, you know, now that you're bringing up, you know, material.
Thank God, just as far enough south.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, that would, if we were, if you were a betting man, would you put money down that everything throughout Gateway is materialized as? So, okay, I just wanna call it out, it's okay, maybe that there's a little bit more sense of urgency to that whole blasting position.
Can I make a second?
Are you cutting me off?
Just asking.
Yeah, I'll second.
Because we have a motion just asking if there was.
Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, you didn't? Okay. I didn't know that. So, yeah, I'll second.
Just asking. Nope, we'll put anybody off. Any questions down here? I have one question. Daniels Preserve is not, is that old of a community? So how did this become so bad, so bad?
We do not know, we, we only, BJ Linings is a kind of a niche contractor in this and they pretty much do exclusive. This is all they do. And when they came out and looked at it, he seemed to think that the original line was not properly done and the hydrogen sulfide got in there. And incidentally, where we found the original six that are really, really in bad condition are right where the force main goes into sanitary sewer.
Highs.
And that's, that is the worst one and they sequentially go from there to varying stages. But what Tim basically said was that it looked to him like the original lining did not take and it just, just rapidly deteriorated that entire line.
And you need to wait that thirty days?
Martin, there's a lot of times when you have a sewage pump station pumping in. The minute that sewage is air, you've got an H two S problem that goes downstream and anything there is gone. Now, all the pipe that there is PVC.
Yes, sir.
Thank God. Okay.
We have a motion, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I also had three, three linings over in Proton Vestoya that were recently redone under warranty and that was the same thing, it was defective work. And we had to prod, prod the contractor a little bit and the developer, but they did come out and redo those.
I think you were tied by saying.
Okay, we have a motion in the second on Kenny's request to rehab six manholes in Daniels Preserve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Vehicle purchase.
And I'll take this one. And in the budget, we had twenty-five thousand dollars for a new vehicle. We ordered another twenty-nineteen Toyota Tundra work truck from Jermaine. And we actually, the pricing was about twenty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. It has an eight-foot bed, it's a standard work truck, backup camera, towing capacity and solid, solid vehicle for the price. And apologize, Mr. Guy, but if I bought a Ford, I'd be spending about nine to twelve thousand dollars more for the same towing capacity. But we looked.
Mr. Guy? Is that cash price?
Yes.
Okay. I also looked at for a twenty-twenty Chevy Silverado, twenty-eight thousand three hundred. And under Ford, twenty-twenty was twenty-four thousand. So that seems a little high when I can, we can get a twenty-twenty at a cheaper price.
Not with a three-hundred-and-eighty-one horsepower, eleven-thousand-pound towing capacity.
But we don't have a cure for this.
I'm looking at, sure, and I appreciate that when we looked at it, but when you look at the Fords and that, you're looking at a V-six and not near the towing capacity or the horsepower. And I look for safety and reliability and that's where the Toyota's ranked tops.
I continue? Yes, warranty. What is the warranty on the?
If you look at it, it's like any other vehicle, three thousand or three years, thirty-six thousand miles.
How about oil changes and tires?
For that period, it's free with the dealer.
Tires, they have.
Oh, not tires, oil, yeah.
Because, like, because, don't look at me like that. With my car, I got, as long as I own my car, free tires for life. So I was wondering if you could do that with the truck?
Not with a commercial vehicle. And as you see, the actual price on the truck was twenty-eight thousand nine eighty-four.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, if a motion in the second to approve the purchase of a twenty-nineteen Toyota Corolla, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Aye. Consider JI, four A, which is the financial statement. Do I have a motion to approve, consider gen item four A?
Boo boo. Second.
Okay, if a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Supervisor comments. I'll start down here this time, because I started down there and left. Oh, what? What?
I got another beating.
And you're sending it for the next board meeting.
Mr. Guy?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll make it quick. What, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be sensitive and something we're gonna have to think about. But the more time I spend riding on the sidewalks, especially on Gateway Boulevard, the more I'm finding that there's a lot of.
Appeavals.
Yeah, upheaval, insulation, whatever you wanna call it.
That's good for you.
You try riding.
Tree roots.
A road bike on that thing. So at some point, we're gonna have to determine either we're gonna keep replacing sidewalks and raising it and leveling it, or we're gonna have to remove some oak trees. And with that being said, it's not just remove one here, one there, because you're not gonna replace them with, with oak. So this look, look that we have in, in Gateway will likely change based on, and not only is it on the sidewalk, but it's coming in on the roads too. There's a couple places on Gateway Boulevard where I, even down, down Gateway Boulevard where I could see there's starting to be some raised things on the road. So I think one thing we need to be thinking about, and we may not have to address it today, but at some point, the look and feel of Gateway will be changing. but at some point, the look and feel of Gateway will be changing based on the, the trees. And we need to have an idea of, we just take them down, or are we going to replace that with some kind of royal palm, or, you know, something else? And I just said royal palm, just as an example.
Question. Can we have an inventory? Let's ask staff, go out there and do an inventory on the carts, and let's just see how serious this is, because I totally agree with what he said. Gateway Boulevard from Walden Lakes to the Gateway Greens entrance is dangerous. Somebody's going to trip or get a lawsuit.
And I'd say, if he goes all the way down, I mean, it's anywhere.
It's anywhere. It's, it's oak tree roots.
And almost to the point where, like, even those, those new ones on, on, from Penn, Penn Links down to eighty-two, where we planted those, I haven't seen, I don't know if it's worth it to even let those things grow.
I suspect that the staff, that staff is well aware of.
Get an inventory.
I think that they, they have the inventory probably in their brains already, that kind of.
But we have to get in front of this, because it's not something we want to say, hey, we're taking oak trees down. I think there's a whole, almost like a PR campaign that we have to go through with it, whether it's, you know, a board or, you know, packing as much as you are engaged with landscaping, to maybe look, or we need to bring someone in, a design architect, to say, what, what does the future of Gateway look like? And be able to show some visuals of, hey, we're going to transform this, we have to, there's, you know, there's impacts to utilities or to roads or whatever, but we got to address that sooner rather than later.
And, and Senator, I may just briefly on that. To, to the extent that there are areas that qualify as trip hazards, the fall hazards now, we need to, we, we're aware, we need to address it by fixing them or warn people before, in fact, we need to go out for an hour and mark them as areas, because that has become a cottage industry. And the various CDDs I represent, these raised sidewalks, the ADA for concrete is like a quarter inch or more. That, that's, it becomes a trip hazard. We've been there. And those can be twenty-five, thirty-five, forty, fifty thousand dollars at a pop kind of deals, and the carriers, so I, I suggest that, to the extent we're aware of any now, we go out there and put signs up or cones or orange markings. It may have, it may be unattractive, but it can help preclude, provide a defense for litigation. There are going to be a lot of red paint.
Mr. Guy. Mrs. Flair.
Yes, I do. What is, what is the Secretary President becoming to do his presidency?
I don't have a date yet. He is actually, I think, other country, yeah. It should be November. We were hoping it was going to be this meeting, but he's out, so. But we haven't forgotten about it. It's still.
And signs for our meetings aren't going up?
And they weren't up this time.
Yeah, they weren't up last time either. Okay.
We should be.
They weren't up last time, because I saw them down at our end.
They are down, yeah, they are. What is the FPL doing? I was asked.
I'll be doing towers. Or doing hardening.
What are they just reinforcing and putting new ones up? Like it's more variable.
Anything about those departments? Ever heard anything? Okay. And I understand that the high school will not be named Gateway High School.
I'm sorry?
Even though the majority of the people wrote in that they want, they wanted Gateway High School, and it was told that they didn't, that it will not be named Gateway High School.
Well, I was at the board meeting today, and I think that wasn't what was stated.
Yeah, that's, that was on the motion.
I mean, I was at the, the, I'm on the naming committee for the high school, and I, we, we presented to the school board today. And basically, there's forty percent of the votes that came out of fourteen thousand smittle, fourteen, fourteen thousand surveys, two thousand entries, Gateway High School was the highest ranked with a hundred and fifteen, forty percent. The next, the next runner-up was Gateway Griffin High School with a hundred, no, what was the?
One eighty-three?
One eighty-three. So that, that would be a discrepancy, you know. But I haven't heard anything coming out of the meeting today that that's not what, that's not, it was the leading by, by survey, and it's the leading by community, but it is up to the board. They're not required to, to take really anything in consideration, so.
That's it.
That's it. Yeah. Then, well, you didn't even ask the chair.
I read your mind.
We are adjourned. Everybody have a head for Halloween.
Senator, I think it was scattered.